I think it was in. Oh, man, it's where it says motion that school committee not vote on granting funds, but rather to wait until the full RSB DB PB blame time board. It's just our names were, our last names, Jeff and Dennis were left off and that should just be added. And I thought I marked it, but I think there was a mistyping of your name, Jane, so somewhere, but I can't find it.
Okay, so we're looking for Beth and Mike Bellin.
It was under unfinished business as we were discussing regional planning, school district planning board, and it was towards the end.
Yeah. All right. Oh, here, Jeffrey, it says Jeff.
You talked about the January 7th minutes, Jeff?
Yeah, is that what we're on?
Yes, that's what we're on.
Okay. No, I was just.
Motion was made by Jeff, but it doesn't say Bowles, Brown, and seconded by Dennis, and it doesn't say here. I think he was left off my name somewhere or another, and I don't find. Yeah, okay, with those corrections, any other discussion? Or, okay, a roll call vote to approve. Dennis here?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Now, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes.
Jane, yes. On the minutes for our workshop meeting that was January 21st, they'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Bonnie and Jeffrey seconding, are there any corrections, additions that need to be made? Oh, that's good. I did these minutes, my first minutes I ever did, so let's have a roll call vote. Danell?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis? Dennis, did you hear?
Dennis, me? Yes.
Yeah. Bonnie?
Yes.
Dennis here?
Yes.
And Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Jane? Yeah. For the purposes of understanding your two names, I'm saying Dennis's last name along with his name to see how that works.
Working the dirt.
All right, minutes have been taken care of. With Lynette, we do not have enrollment figures, and so we will skip item C, and we have no miscellaneous correspondence to deal with. Our, item four, our student representative was unable to wait until our executive session was over because she had a class, so hopefully.
Well, now that's student spotlight.
Oh, student spotlight, sorry.
So I don't say our student representative tonight, but that's okay.
All right. So I've been duly corrected, so we have no student representative report tonight, and our student spotlight hopefully will have next meeting.
Absolutely.
When we start on time.
Yeah.
And now we have item six, public comment. If somebody wants to tell us public comment relating to items on these.
Hi, Missy Byrne. I'm just wondering if I can ask to add an agenda item to a future meeting, which would be that we discuss the elementary students going back to school four or five days a week. Seems like our muddy brook is doing it, and Lee's doing it, and just wondering if there's any way to get our students back into school.
I'll address that in a minute.
Beth will be addressing that in her report. I will write it down as an agenda item in case you have a feeling that the answer is not complete enough, okay, Missy?
Well, it won't be complete enough. It's gonna be an ongoing topic, so, for sure.
She will be just addressing it to the degree that we can at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. So now, do we have a curriculum and professional development coordinated report tonight?
We do not tonight.
Okay. Let's take through item seven, item eight, business managers' report. Chris, good evening.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I have a couple of reports for you tonight. The first is the warrants report for your approval. We have four warrants on this report. I can just go over kind of some of the highlights for each one. The first warrant from December 31st, it's for $206,000 and change, it's benefits expense. The majority of it is federal and state income tax Medicaid. That made up $174,000 of the $206,000. The next one we have is, excuse me, on January 8th, for about $335,000. The majority of that was from transportation bill and the retirement expense, about $225,000 of the warrant was for that. Then we had just, you know, miscellaneous expenses that make up the rest of the $100,000. We had about $20,000 spent tuition and, you know, basically just a bunch of other expenses. The $24,000 one from January 8th, I actually don't have my notes on that, so I may have to come back to that one. And kind of out of order here is a January 1st for $303,000 and change. Again, that was listed as benefits expense. Health and dental was $240,000 alone, just out of the $303,000. For the notes, basically, and I think what we'll do is we'll add the amounts for it, we kind of just try to bring to your attention the large items, you know, that made up the majority of that warrant. But we can certainly add dollar amounts to that as well, just so you will know exactly what we're talking about. And I do have the other warrant for January 8th. That was just regular expenses, basically made up of, you know, nothing, nothing major, just expense warrant that paid all the outstanding bills for that particular week. I don't know if anybody has any questions for this report?
What are retirement expenses?
That would be for Berkshire County retirement that we pay for employees.
Chris, just on a, why in the, why in the January 8th bucket is it all on the same line item of transportation and retirement expenses? They seem very different.
Well, basically, a warrant is really just a group of bills that were paid on one particular day. So.
Got it.
The transportation bill and the retirement bill were basically both paid along with, you know, oh, I don't know, about 30 other bills on that particular day. So, you know, again, the notes, and I'll try to make this so that the notes actually make more sense to you, so you'll know that really the only reason those were listed is just because they made up about 70%. Those two items alone made up about 70% of the warrant.
But why are there two line items for January 8th then?
There are actually probably 30 line items. Those were just the two largest ones for that. Again, a warrant, I have it here. You know, we have AT&T, Big Y, I mean, we have a ton of bills that were paid on that particular warrant. The transportation to Messine bus and the retirement expense to mass teachers' retirement in that particular one just make up the majority of it. But, you know, again, a warrant can be just a number of really disassociated expenses that are all just, you know, bunched together into one batch.
So it looks like we have two batches then the same day, so I'm just kind of confused.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times what'll happen is that they will accumulate and get a warrant ready, and they just get posted on the same day. So that's basically why she might have had it where she did, you know, this particular one for $334,000, had it all ready to go, and then started a new one with the $24,000, and then just posted them both on January 8th.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Beth has a comment?
No.
No, you don't?
Okay. I was just trying to help him out, but you have to go into the chair in between so that someone can be recognized instead of back and forth.
Yeah. We lost a little bit of order there, that's all. So I'll take a motion to approve the warrant.
So moved.
From Bonnie, a second from, second, second from Danell. Roll call vote. Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dennis here?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Dennis? Dennis?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Now, yes. Jonathan?
Yes.
And Arthur?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. So that's unanimous. All right, so we have some budget transfers, Chris?
We do, yes. I have a bunch of budget transfers here. It looks like one, oh, about two and a half pages of them. This is something that we do at various points throughout the year, really just to kind of bring any negative balances that we may have in the budget back up to a positive balance. What happens basically every year is that we budget at the beginning of the year, and then, you know, especially in a year like this year where, you know, the majority of this budget was done before COVID even came out. So we have a number of expenses that were unanticipated, and on some other ways, such as if you look at really the second expense there, where we're moving things from ELA field trips to ELA instructional materials, we budgeted for field trips, and those field trips aren't going to happen this year. So, you know, we end up having extra money in one account, and we're using it to just, you know, offset expenses that they decided they would use instead of the field trips in another. And so we just went through the entire account structure, picked out any negative balances, and then we looked at accounts that had positive remaining balances that we felt very confident would not be used for the remainder of the year. You know, we have items like, again, on the first page, if you look, there's a $16,000 transfer out of the sped caseworkers account. That's basically because those employees were being paid from the para account. And so therefore, we had extra money in that account. And so we moved it to cover the remainder of the year for actually my company's services into the contracted services. But that's just to kind of give you a brief explanation as to why we actually have these account transfers. It's really nothing unusual. I mean, it happens in every budget where, you know, you build the budget in January and February, which we're working on next year's right now. And you, you know, you basically, you speak with all the people involved with the school's administration and staff, and you get really what is their best estimate as to what we'll be needing in the school year. Again, with this particular year, I mean, nobody really could see certain things coming when we did this budget. So, you know, again, we're going to have transfers to and from accounts, but what this does basically is it just cleans it up, so when we're looking at expenses, we don't see, oh, my gosh, we're, you know, we're over budget in this certain account by, you know, $10,000 or something. It happens every year. It's nothing unusual, but this way, it just, it's kind of easier to watch the expenses when you don't have a bunch of negative balances and then a bunch of accounts with extra money sitting in them. So that's basically it. I can answer any questions you may have on it.
Anybody, Bonnie?
Yeah. My question is, usually, we don't see this many items in a budget transfer list. So I understand what you're saying, but I just want to be sure. I think you said you make these transfers only after discussion with Beth, that this is how she wants them moved?
In these cases, we basically just took this into, we looked at the negative balances and moved them out of accounts. Again, like I said, with, if somebody's being paid out of a different account than we had put them in the budget, that money is not going to be used. So we did send these into Lynette, you know, and Beth certainly saw them when the packet was being put together. If she had any concerns, she would have reached out to us, obviously, but, you know, she had not, so.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? I see two hands up, but I didn't see whose was first, I'm sorry. But I'm gonna call on Dennis here first because he spoke less so far tonight.
Okay. A question I had while we're on this topic is from, you know, one of the things that struck me in the budget transfers when we got this document is the huge amount of money that we've transferred from, you know, different forms of student services, like student services for caseworkers, Mount Everett sped caseworkers, you know, a lot of sped caseworkers, student services. If you go down, there's, there's, there's probably, it looks like, you know, around $100,000 that basically weren't spent on student services caseworkers. And I'm kind of wondering about, well, were those students no longer serviced?
No. I kind of alluded to this earlier. The caseworkers, we had so many budget accounts in this district, I mean, tons and tons of budget accounts. And what we tried to do last year was we tried to condense the number of accounts so we weren't breaking things out into so many categories. And so we budgeted caseworkers into, you know, those particular accounts. But then what happened was when payroll was done, they were all paid out of the para lines. And, you know, as far as a reporting purpose for, you know, Desi's end of year report, that's where they would be placed on the end of year report. So we said, that's fine, you know, you can, you can leave them there. But what, what basically that meant is that, oops, now we have all this money, you know, in those caseworker accounts that those people weren't being paid out of those accounts anymore. So that's why it got moved out. It's not that we don't have any in the district.
So it doesn't mean, for example, if you look on the second page of that document, that we took $13,500 and some dollars of the caseworkers to Mount Everett to put towards paying the Mount Everett assistant principal salary. I shouldn't assume that.
That's correct. I mean, we, I mean, I'm trying to make the screen big again. You know, we did obviously make that transfer just, just to, you know, bring that salary amount back up to zero, but that doesn't mean we eliminated one of the caseworkers to pay for that. It just meant that they were already paid out of another line.
Okay, thank you.
Jeffrey?
Dennis asked the question I was curious about.
Okay, great. Two for one. Any other questions? All right, so I'll take a motion to approve the budget transfers submitted.
So moved. Second.
Second is from John.
Motion second.
Yeah, got it. All right. Roll call vote. Jonathan?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dennis here?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. Okay, budget transfers accepted. So thank you for your report. I know you're really busy putting the new budget together and making sense of all that. So we're going on to the next agenda item, which is new business. And we have a draft of the academic calendar for next year for our consideration.
So all I would say about this is, this is your first look. You can take time with this. It's also sitting with the SB REA, which is what we always do, and they want to take some time and look at it as well. What I would say is it's structured very similarly to the way it was this year or was intended to be before we had the shift to COVID. So it would be the same, starting with the PD days, beginning August 26th and 27th, and school starting the first day for students, August 30th. And you can see, but it's very similarly aligned to what we were going to have this year before the change came in. But you have time to look at it and come back with feedback and think through that. I just wanted to get it in people's hands so they could start taking a look.
Thank you very much, Beth, for giving us the heads up and.
Can I just ask a quick question, Beth? We've already had some lost days, so do you think there's an adjustment already on the June 22 in terms of last day?
You mean the two that we, the two snow days this year?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, won't that make that, the dates that we show for the last day of school in, of the quote, school year is, is the 15th of June? But has it changed by now?
This is next year's calendar. No, so June of 20, I added, two snow days were added to this year in June 21. This is for next June. I haven't added any snow days yet.
So that doesn't change next, okay, yeah, okay, right, yeah, because that's.
Right. So as of right now, if everything stays as is, the last day of school without any snow days is slated to be June 13th. However, if we had the same situation, we'd have to move it out a couple days.
Okay? Oh, there's another hand.
Oh, Carrie Anne.
Carrie Anne?
Thank you. Beth, I have a question. In, again, I obviously wasn't a part of the conversations about the calendar and how it got developed in terms of COVID, but thinking somewhat proactively, if COVID is still a problem in the next academic year, what type of flexibility do we have with this calendar for moving the start date of the school year up so that we're able to take more advantage of the warmer months when windows can be open and there's less restriction of airflow in the building?
So there's a whole, there's a whole host of things we'd have to think about. So we didn't adjust the calendar. The state adjusted the calendars, requiring that 10 days were reduced and put upfront specifically for professional development and PPE to make sure that we were prepared to accept students into the buildings and that they were safe and people were trained to do that work. So that wasn't, you know, that wasn't us, and it was required that it was put up front in, in those months. So the other piece of that is this is negotiated, right? So we'd have to be talking with the bargaining unit as to how many days, whether they're willing to start in the middle of August, you know, and where that would end. So there's always, right, there's summer school, there's all sorts of things, but so we'd have to, there's always flexibility. I don't like to say there's not, but some things are going to be negotiable as well.
Does that answer your question?
I'm not sure. We'd have to ask the teacher, you know, the wider groups to see if that would be something they'd be interested in. I don't know.
Yeah, yes, it definitely answers my question. It just, I guess I'm just sort of bringing up in some very rough, broad stroke way, us just sort of thinking about all of the resources that we have available to us, and the warmer months is definitely one that we have available to us and open spaces when we're considering COVID. So just wanted to bring that up when we're talking about the calendar.
I appreciate that. I, and I think there, I think we will be talking a little bit more about some funding that we potentially have from additional grants work, where we might want to expand our summer school program, maybe down the road. We're not anywhere near ready to talk about that yet, but that'll be something that's in the work as we move through this budget cycle. Or, you know, create even broader after-school recovery type or enrichment type programming as a result to obviously deal with COVID-related issues educationally. So, yes, it's going to be something that's going to be talked about.
All right, we are going on to item B, which we need to vote to approve the lateral move on the Unit A salary schedule effective February 1st, 2021. We have a teacher, one person on the list here, if you have the packet in front of you, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, Bonnie.
Second.
Second from Mark. Any questions? All right, I'll take a roll call vote. Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Dennis here?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Jane, yes. Unanimous? All right, so now we are going to take a motion to approve the one-year moratorium agreement for the SB REA, Unit A, D, and E, and I think we have to do them each separately.
So moved.
And a second?
Second. But we need to do it individually, or can we group them?
Well, I'm gonna hear from Beth about whether we can group them.
I, I think it's okay to group them, right, Bonnie?
Yeah, I'll just read all of the titles at once. Let me just open this. Okay. Motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Southern Berkshire Regional School Committee and the Southern Berkshire Regional Education Association for Unit A teachers, Unit D secretaries, paraprofessionals, and food service workers, and Unit E, the custodial staff.
Second.
Okay, Bonnie and Jeffrey.
The, the negotiate, well, the negotiation subcommittee made the recommendation for approval to the full school committee, and a vote was taken in an executive session.
All right, so we've already voted in executive session. It's required, it says here, we're required to vote in public here.
Yes.
Yes, that we're authorizing as a result of this, our chair to sign the three memorandums on behalf of the full school committee.
All right. Any further discussion before we have our roll call vote? I think we should say in public that we were very pleased with how well the negotiations went, and we want to sign the SB REA, and our attorneys for, and our, before making this a very smooth process. I will start with Bonnie.
Yes.
I wanted you to get the first yes. Dennis here?
Yes.
Hannah Bracken?
Yes.
Those are our three members of our negotiation subcommittee besides myself. Dennis?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Arthur?
Extinction.
Jane, yes. All right. I didn't miss anybody, did I? Very happy to have those approved at this date. All right, now we are going to bring out our school committee anti-bias and anti-racism action plan, which we worked on at our workshop meeting. And I am wanting to clarify a few things and also ask for any changes you would like to see on the grid that was in the package. It was brought to my attention that there was an item in terms of requesting updates on action taken by the administration and teachers that might be going on that we wouldn't be aware of, and that we requested that superintendent mention at our meetings or bring it, bring it to our attention, what is going on, so the communication is better. it to our attention, what is going on, so the communication is better between what's actually going on in the building that we don't see and what we're hoping, how the progress goes. So I've added that in my notes, I'm going to put it on the one line here. I did want to clarify, I just, whether, these are not subcommittees, the people who are responsible for these various action steps, and I was wondering if they're allowed to have discussions over email about their thoughts and how things are progressing, or is that a, we should be hoping meeting law? So if these groups.
They're not subcommittee.
They're not subcommittees, they are two or three people. It's my thought that they would not be.
Right, you can have a communication.
The numbers don't warrant open meeting law violations.
Okay. Okay, so I, I'm glad we got it clarified, so those people are starting to figure out how we can meet our one-month timeline of maybe making progress on some of these things that are next meeting. We should be getting some progress reports where progress has been made, and Beth and I are more than willing to help you make connections with the people that you want and to help move this forward. Does anybody want to bring up anything tonight about it?
The only thing I would mention is that one of those bodies is, is actually a subcommittee, the, some of that work that was assigned to the policy subcommittee, that would always be, you know, held accountable to the open meeting law.
Oh, absolutely, yes. Okay.
Jeff.
Steph, sorry, why am I not seeing? Oh, it's up there on the corner, okay.
It's like, yeah, you can see it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's in front of the yellow, I can play, sorry.
Next meeting. Hannah and I have already started to work on our task around the land acknowledgement we're moving forward, so, but we should be on target, so. Anything else you'd want to contribute to that, or?
I, I think that kind of sums it up. We're not finished, but we're making some progress.
Yes, I love people to, I love, I was very grateful that you put a one-month check-in date, but I also understand that everybody is very busy, and if you don't meet the one month, or you have a small amount of progress, there, there's no punishment planned.
Yeah, we're, we're fortunate that other people, bodies in Berkshire County, and there are resources in Berkshire County to work with Stockbridge Muncie, and so we're getting some good guidance, I think it's kind of accelerated our work, so I think our hope is that we're making a recommendation by our next meeting, right?
Well, I'm very gratified that our committee is coming behind this statement and putting it to act, and I, I'm really impressed with your commitment to this. My thank you. Okay, Carrie Anne. Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. I'm wondering if it might be helpful in the timeline, instead of just saying one month, to actually put a, a date, so that it's, because I don't even really remember when this, like, the date of this, just to put it in a concept of time.
Okay, we can do, I can put a date, on this document, it says January 21st, so it's going to be the meeting closest to a month from then that the reporting would happen.
So which, which date is that? I guess that's what I'm asking.
January 21st is the date of our lap. Let me look, what, what meeting is the closest? I would say our February 18th meeting is the closest to a month away from the January 21st.
Can you say it once more, Jane, February what?
18.
February 18th is our next meeting that would be in the ballpark, because March 4th is not an appropriate time, because it'll be a public hearing for the budget.
I just like dates, I just needed to know the date, thank you.
I'll make sure to put it on the agenda for then, for report out time, okay? All right. February 28th. Okay, now.
Could I make one comment, please, before we get off of that? I, I just wanted to say that, to Jeff and Hannah, that, you know, I've had a, a long history of reasonably close relationships with the Stockbridge Muncie Tribe officials for, because of some other reasons of other things I've been involved in, and if I can be of any help to you, you know, I, I certainly would be happy to be, you know.
Thank you, Dana. All right, now we have a report from the superintendent regarding the governor's budget and revenue projections as they stand now.
So I'm going to do a very, very high-level look at this, because there'll be much more detail coming out as we move through the budget process, and as you can see today, even the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents had a 60-page slide show on Chapter 70 and the spending requirements from the state, so if anyone wants some light reading and budget charts, but at the end of that, there are some excellent resources if you really want to dig in to the budget. I'm not going to repeat them all to everybody here, because it doesn't make a ton of sense, but the governor's House One budget is out on the website, thebudget.digital.mass.gov. If you just type in the FY22 budget into, for Massachusetts, into your search bar, it pops right up for you, so. Also, the Department of Labor Services, Data Bank puts the cherry sheets out there, which shows the phases of the budget, so the governor's budget that is assigned to Southern Berkshire, you'll be able to see the elements that make up their revenue portion, so that's out there. But there's a lot of places that you can go to get a lot of great information about the state budget. So for Southern Berkshire, our Chapter 70 money, which is the amount of money, funding that we receive, according to the state, to, that it costs to educate a student, and as we've been saying for lots of years now, we're actually in the hold harmless zone, and we receive for, for next year, $2,6891, which is an increase of $20,100, or 1.01%. And that's based on the October 1, yeah, well, the October 1, 2020 enrollment, which was 670 students, times the rate that they assign to those who are in the hold harmless zone of $30 per student. So that's how they get the $20,000 increase in a, just for the Chapter 70 portion. Chapter 71, regional school transportation reimbursement, I don't have the exact percentages, but right now, overall, that area of the budget, the state budget, went down, and for us, it is $49,907 down compared to what we received last year for reimbursement, which was, I think, upwards of around 83.9% at the end. So that tends to change, but all these numbers tend to change. So these are very, very cursory beginning points to talk about, but that was not an excellent sign. With that said, we received a grant last year called Esr-1, and I never remember what the acronym is for it, but I'll spell it out for you a, a different evening, and that was to help us as we navigated, it was aid from the state to help us with COVID-related expenses last, when we came in last fall. They have, we're calling it Esr-2, they didn't name it Esr-2, but we're calling it Esr-2 because each district got an allocation assigned to them in, in this next round, which is good for us to use through September 30 of '23, and it can be used for anything. So we, whether it's COVID, additional COVID-related expenses, or expenses for a whole variety, a host of things, and that money I was speaking about before, Carrie Anne, when we were thinking about, do we expand educational opportunities to help, you know, with some recovery of educational practices, or do we put on some wider programs, and, you know, all those things we can think about, but we might be able to use that funding to help us with that. So we received about 3.7% more than we received in the first round, so we are eligible for So that is a, a nice chunk of change. I think they said the minimum amount a district was going to receive based on need was $85,000. $75,000 for a district, and then $10,000 for social emotional support, so $85,000 was the minimum, so this is what we received based on need.
Could you repeat that number again? And that can be spent through '23, September of '23?
So we obviously want to be very thoughtful about that and see what, what kinds of projections we're going to have for a whole variety, host of things that could be coming up. There's also a second, it's aid, it's not a grant, a, a second, smaller pool of money, which I think totals, and, and I know Chris is still on here, so he can tell me if I'm incorrect, but, and I think, I hope he's not buzzing me from here, but just jump in if, if I get something wrong. But the second pool of money is around $70,000, which is just aid that they're giving out, it's $25 per student, and then an additional 75 per student for the economic disadvantage portion of that, so you could get anywhere from $25 or $100 per student, depending on how they qualify. So I think we have about $70,000 coming to us that way, again, we can, to use, however, I, I think it comes in two installments, and I think there's one in April, and then, I'm not sure, but the next one is probably end of year. So the inflation rate is down from, to 1.41%. Last year it was up at 1.99%, not that it makes a difference here, but in different elements, in that really huge funding formula that they talk about at the state, that inflation rate is applied, and so when it's down, I think that's where you see some trends, so, but I thought that was important to share. According to this budget, the governor has begun to implement the Student Opportunities Act funding, which was supposed to be phased in over a seven-year process, and the first year is part of this, his budget proposal. So again, we were not slated to receive any additional funding from the Student Opportunities Act. I did submit, and on our website is the plan that, that we had to submit to the state on the Student Opportunities Act, whether or not you were funded in any way. The governor will, or the commissioner will publish those, and what we did in Southern Berkshire is use the initiatives that we're already doing with our own financing, and we applied that to, to that work, because it wasn't like we were getting, you know, anything else to work with, so we're just showing them how we're using the funds that we have to improve student outcomes. And we're currently working on our certification for Access and Deficiency Fund, which is often a revenue source that we bring into the budget process as a way to help suppress the assessments to the member town, so there would be a lot more information coming, this is just a very early, early look related to the, to the governor's budget. Okay? Any questions I can answer? Probably not today, but I'll try. Dennis? Did I get it?
Yeah, I had, I had one question for you. I wonder with your sources, if you've heard anything about, you know, there were some things that they did kind of leave out of the education budget because of their concern about revenue, and I don't know whether you saw, but today, the news, the, the news article of the day, if you're in the Commonwealth of Mass, was that, that they, the, the state revenue outperformed itself in December by some, I think it was maybe 12, 15% more than what they had planned they would have?
Yes, I'm sure.
You know, are, are you, are you hearing any waves over the, over the, through the atmosphere about that that may help them maybe put some of that stuff back in or anything?
Well, I think that's why there is some thought that this, the Student Opportunity Act funds will actually happen for some districts. Some districts had quite a, quite a program invested on what they thought they were going to get, so I think some people are a little more hopeful. I'm not sure how it's going to relate to a district like us, but that's good news, right? So I'm going to be hopeful that the governor's number is always conservative and usually changes. So again, this is the time where advocacy on regional transportation, right, is, is somewhere there, I, I know the rural aid was moved up to $3 million, it's dropped back down to $1.5 million. Again, we don't qualify, but it would be lovely if we got some of either 1.5 or 3 million, and as my, I, as you know, I am a board member now of the Mass Association of Regional Schools, and I got charged to take a look at what the rural, what that commission is doing now and where they are. There's been some changes in leadership and management, so I'm going to work with the current superintendent in Mohawk Regional Schools and try to re-energize that initiative, so I'll have more to report on as we move through the budget process.
Oh, I see Hannah, so Beth's hands up?
Yeah, I was just hoping, Beth, with the Student Opportunities Act funds, about how much money, did you say, like, what's that range that we're expecting from it?
We're getting nothing.
Nothing from that, okay. What I asked, because I thought, I thought I heard other.
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Opportunity, right? It's opportunity, you can only go up, is what I say about that, so.
It's an opportunity that they maintain, they may give us something that's not there yet.
Right. Oh, Carrie Anne.
Oh, Carrie Anne.
Beth, I'm wondering about the, the funds that you named Esr-2. You had mentioned, mentioned that needs were determined, and I'm wondering if you can all explain at all about how they determined our needs to, in order to give us that amount of money, and if you were surprised at all by that amount that they gave us, and if you have any insight into, into how, into just like, what that might mean for how they're looking at us as a district?
Well, I think just in general, there is a, there is a calculation, and they basically said, we're going to wait until, I'm not sure who did the calculation, I'm sure we can find it, but I think either Rob O'Donnell, I can't remember who, who, they, they got a pot of money that came in from, or Bill Bell, whoever is the budget guru at the, at the state, they got an allocation, they take a portion of the funding off the top and leave it for statewide amounts, and then they took the remainder and divvied it up. So there is a formula that I think we can dig out and find. I am surprised at the amount, but it is part of that 3.7% increase across the board that they gave to everybody, so our original allocation in E-S-S-R-1, so Esr is what we're saying, was 144,000, 145,000 roughly, and so now we're at the 571,000, so I think that is because we got, we got a bigger allocation statewide. So I, I don't know, but I, they did do it, what, what they considered a needs-based approach, and I know one of the things that I'm hopeful, because we did lots of forms and submissions as districts, like I did a submission on technology needs, infrastructure needs, you know, what, what does our connectivity look like, and I did not hold back with some of the issues and concerns, so some of this, I think, is their attempt to try to help us do what we can. I think people who had needs for certain types of PPE. other types of supports that, that families and students needed. So um, they, there was a whole host of reasons based on what we submitted throughout, um, based on our plans that they're looking at, all of that. And that's where they're kind of trying to make the decisions of how best to allocate to people. But we can look exactly for their formula. I'm sure it's out there somewhere.
Uh, Jenna?
Beth, thinking about what we were, we were discussing previously in the subcommittee, especially the advocacy part of it. Do you think that work on advocacy needs to be done now?
Yeah, I think that's what was, you know, hopefully we were going to get to on the agenda, especially as we move to budget. I think it absolutely needs to be done now.
So um, I mean, I'm just thinking that, I don't know when we're meeting next.
Well, we'll figure that out when, you know. You know, we have, we have a while, right? They usually don't um finalize the budget. I believe it was August last year, which is, you know, not great. But they're supposed to have it done by June thirtieth, for sure. But we, there's phases of the budget, so now is the time to be thinking about areas of concern for us as a district and uh things we can advocate for as, as we're moving through. And that doesn't prevent us from any types of discussions, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah, Beth, will this impact at all how you are um positioning the budget? The uh items that we're looking at in finance? The information that you received?
Um, I think it's, it's hard to tell right now because we're, we're in the process of gathering information and seeing, but obviously, um, and, and I think we want to think about this long term, right? We have until twenty twenty-three, so do we want to spread that out? Since, you know, and I, and we're definitely going to want feedback. This is one of the places that we definitely want feedback from, from our families and our communities around what would help. Does, does it help to, I'm going to, people will probably be mad at me for saying something like this out loud, but um, if we reinstituted late buses because we want to be able to provide after-school programming, could we spread this out and those are the things we're thinking about? And we'd be coming to the communities and saying, what do, what do you think about that? And if we use this funding for that, does that make sense? We also have to be aware that COVID isn't necessarily going away because there's a vaccine, right? So we're still going to need supplies and, you know. So how, you know, how do we manage all of those pieces? So it seems like a lot of money, but it's money over a couple of years that we want to be thoughtful about how we spend.
And it's really not a lot of money, but.
But it's some, it's, it's more than.
We're not turning it away.
Right, for sure, for sure.
Carrie Ann?
I just wanted to um add to the conversation um that with my work with the state in the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, I spend a lot of time advocating for rural communities up to the state and am always on the lookout for opportunities for rural communities in the ways that we are underrepresented at the state level. And um, it was brought to my attention that there is, um, that there are two new grant programs that have just been announced because of the, um, through the Economic Development Bill, but it's through, it's money that's coming through the Department of Housing and Community Development. And it's their one-stop application and it's um, uh, there's one that's a community planning grant. And then there's a second one, that's a Rural Development Fund. And I spent some time um with their deputy director and going through their webinar series to learn more about the applications and the projects that they're specifically looking to fund. But because they're both new pots of money, there's um, there's a lot of flexibility within them. And if at some point um, either folks from this committee or Beth, you in particular, would like to talk more about it to maybe sway, to see if there are projects that might fit, um, I would be happy to do that.
That would be great. Uh, and, and you, there are schools eligible or are the towns eligible? Because either way, we could, we could um harness that energy and bring it on to the regional roundtable if it's town-driven.
Um, some of them are municipal applicants, um, and some, the school is also eligible as an applicant as long as there's a letter of support from the municipality.
Okay, great. Yes, I would definitely like to do that.
Uh, Bonnie?
Yeah, um, Carrie Ann, do you think you could forward some information about those to us? So we could sort of like peek our brains?
Sure, I'd be happy to. There's a number of webinars that they have up that they recorded. And I believe that there's still one more that they have um, that's upcoming. And if, just before I'm able to send it, it's on the Department of Housing and Community Development, um, D H C D. And um, yeah, I, I just um, I represent the, the Berkshire Hill towns on behalf of the state. And I'm really hoping that someone in our region starts, gets some of this money because it's new and it's there and there's definitely some opportunities.
Great. So if you could just email some connection, I'd love to look at it. Thank you.
You, Carrie Ann?
Yep, I can send it around to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Carrie Ann, if you want to send it to me, I can uh send it to the full school committee via the chair. So the ball on, uh, up, on the up and up.
Thanks, Jane.
All right. Anything else on this very important item? Uh, we're going to be talking budget until we're blue in the face for the next couple of months, so.
Every day.
We're warming up. All right, so we have um items um ten and eleven on your agenda, it might be nine and ten, both having to do with the, the uh Regional School District Planning Board. So I'd like to sort of be able to merge those things so we can have a discussion that includes an update on where the planning board is and then take our vote about um the uh proposal that um Lucy Fraschler brought up about um bridge funding. So we have um, you know, five members uh on our committee who are representatives on the board. And I want anybody who's on the board to time in, but those of you who aren't on the board might like to know that we're sort of moving out of the phase one of thinking about whether this is worth looking at um at all. And now we're in a sort of a phase two about um looking more deeply about whether a merger between the two districts, a consolidation is going to enhance student um education and be uh financially good for the town. And um, Beth recently helped the board submit a uh a, a grant application to the state uh through DESSY to fund this further work, which is going to cost between, I think, a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars was the estimate. And I, I was hoping that Beth had said on Tuesday that we should be hearing soon. I guess you don't, haven't heard yet.
Well, I actually did um get some feedback. She, um, Michelle Griffin, who is, who receives in the applications jointly with Christine Lynch, did write back to me and acknowledged with the weather, it kind of threw everybody for a loop. But um, we, I did hear from her, uh, I sent it in on Monday with a few small adjustments that they had asked for. And she said they're getting right on it, so I'm hoping that, I keep checking because I'm waiting for them to, to release the amounts because they really want to get them out there. They know that we need to expend those funds or aim to expend those funds by June thirtieth. So uh, they're trying to.
Madam Chair, point of order? Should we make a motion to um move item, uh, item eleven, ten before nine? Say, you're talking about kind of the status ahead before talking about the proposal?
Well, I just, I just say that I suppose I should have had a motion that I was going to sort of work with them together and because we want to have a rich discussion. And I was just doing an introduction to where we are now uh, with my effect how people want to vote on the proposal.
Can we make a motion to merge the two items?
I think that's fine, Jeffrey, go ahead.
I motioned that we merge items nine and ten in the same discussion.
A second from Danell, okay. Um, any, uh, I, I think we did just have a roll call vote on that one way or the other? Okay, so, uh, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Uh, Donovan?
Yes.
Arthur?
Yes.
Uh, Hannah?
Yes.
Dennis Fear?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Uh, Dennis?
Yes.
Carrie Ann?
Yes.
And me. Okay, yeah, okay. I just felt it would be a more personal discussion if we weren't constrained between the two and they are related. Does anybody uh who's not on the planning board have a question for the planning board members here? Uh, that would help them inform their voting? I don't, uh, Jonathan?
Can Bonnie say what she wants to right now?
Well, uh, anybody can say what they, anything regarding these two. I was just, I wanted to make sure that the people who are not on the board uh feel informed. Dennis? Uh, Dennis Fear?
What, what exactly is it that we're going to be voting on? I don't understand.
Well, as you recall, we were asked to provide um three thousand dollars.
Oh, right, yeah, right, 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 right. I, I'm, I'm with you. Okay, that money, okay.
And uh, just to summarize, um, we asked Lucy to come back a second time with more information. It seemed our, uh, our committee wasn't ready uh to make commitments. And um, so we were going to go back and look at the finance and some other issues and understand it uh as well as we could. And then we said that we would come back tonight with a decision to have a vote. So I see lots of hands up here. Um, uh, Jenna?
Um, I'm wondering how, um, how the five members who participate in the planning board feel about financing, about the three thousand dollars. Have you guys discussed it? How do you feel about it? Because you have more information than those of us who are on the outside.
I'd be happy to address it if you want.
Uh, well, let me just go, go around with the questions and then I will give everybody on the board a chance to respond to Jenna. Is that acceptable to you, Jenna?
I, as long as I get an answer.
Okay, uh, so right now we're not giving opinions, we're just asking uh questions. Jonathan?
Well, sort of a point of procedure, um, should we just put a motion on the table and then we can be freely and openly?
All right, so um, would anybody like a motion?
I will make a motion that the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School be approved the three thousand dollar um item for support of bridge activities of the regional planning board.
Point of chair, madam, point of order, Madam Chair.
Yeah?
I don't believe that, I, well, I do not believe that it would be proper for members who are on that, that body, uh, who are members of the school committee to actually vote in any vote on whether or not we're going to give them money. That is, that is about as direct a conflict of interest as you would ever see.
Why?
Because it's a conflict of interest. They are members of this other body that will receive the money.
But we do not, I would like, uh, I'll raise my hand to answer that.
Uh, okay, Bonnie? I, I recognize you, Bonnie.
My answer to, my answer to that is we do not give up our rights as school committee members because we were, are on that other group, number one. Number two, we haven't spoken as a group and I can tell you from our meeting, I don't think we are all of a similar mind at all. And I don't think we can be disenfranchised by um by the fact that we are serving and by mandated school committee position on the regional planning board.
Uh, thank you, Bonnie. Uh, Carrie Ann? Uh, we have a motion that was on the floor, uh, which we have to decide if there's going to be a second before we get too much more discussion going on here.
I'll second it.
Uh, so Arthur's going to second um, uh, Bonnie's motion. Let's have a roll call vote if we second the motion and the second, and then we can continue.
Wait, what's a roll call vote on?
We haven't had any discussion.
There's no discussion?
Second time.
No, a roll call vote on whether it's, it's okay to go, well, Dennis was saying the motion was invalid. So I'm, you think we? I was more, I was considering whether anybody else is going to, I, I mean, we're in the middle of a kind of messy discussion here to find out um how we feel about Dennis's position. And Bonnie had said that because we were mandated to be members of the board, it's not the same. It's distinct from other uh, his immune, I would say, from his position. Which I think I have to agree with. I don't know, Jonathan?
Well, I think because the motion was moved and seconded, we can continue this discussion.
Yeah, okay.
This can be part of our discussion.
Okay, fine. Uh, so let's see, where are we?
We call them, Carrie Ann.
Carrie Ann, sorry.
So I'm just coming from the perspective that folks who weren't, who aren't a part of the regional planning board to be able to ask questions like Jenna's did. So that's what these questions are. I'm just wondering from um, the, the regional planning board members, if, to talk about how this three thousand dollars um plays in, in the larger scheme of things, particularly in relation to this potential grant that seems incoming? And if this three thousand dollars is um, um, being looked at as a token of support? If there are um other opportunities to show support beyond this three thousand dollars? And um, if all of the meetings, I sat in for a little bit on the last one and it seemed like a very uncomfortable environment to be working in. And I'm curious if they're all like that or if it was just that one?
Does anybody want to respond to that?
I'll, I'll respond, um, Carrie Ann, to the point of request for funding is that this was an unfunded mandate that was pushed by the towns to explore consolidation. They discovered the body, discovered as it was going through this process, that we needed a project manager and some uh consultants to be able to do the work. Because this was unfunded and it's falling short of the budget season, they have now come to the school districts. And I've spoken to this before where, you know, we're in a pandemic, we have families that are needing support from the school. They're asking for bridge funding. And they got bridge funding from Southern Berkshire, they got a grant from Berkshire-Tconnick. And we have held off because there was not a clear budget that was put forward and whatnot. I think to your question about the, the grant, I think the need, um, in Pierre Dylan's words, at the meeting was that uh, on Tuesday, he said, in two weeks, we should know if we have the money. And in a week, a week after that, we should have the money. He thought it was a very high likelihood. I don't think it's necessarily granted that it would happen. But if that's the case, the needs for the. But if that's the case, the needs for the bridge funding is diminished. You could argue, one could argue. That's just my kind of nonbiased take on the situation.
Bonnie?
Yes, let me, whoop, I just did myself. Let me address it in terms of a couple of things. One, Carrie Anne, you definitely picked up on a vibe that does exist. Number one. Number two, in terms of the issue of money, the 3,000, you could look at it in several ways. So 3,000 from each of the two school districts would be used to basically start the website that it was agreed that this board agreed is needed and hadn't been planned for in terms of being able to communicate to the larger community. It is not in, I checked, it is not in the grant proposal that was submitted for the 120 something thousand dollars. That's a major league effort to, one, get a project director to get some action that will take off. I mean, our superintendent has put in, I can't even tell you how much work. And if we get the grant, it's due in great deal to Beth's efforts. So the three, if you look at it in terms of the 3,000, it is for, would be going towards what they want to start immediately, which the community has asked for because they haven't been getting information, et cetera. It would be getting the website up and running. That's number one. Number two, there is the whole issue that we've put ourselves in a way, in a very politically poor position in terms of the communities. We did not do what Dennis had advised way back, way, way back when it was the initial community effort and came from the towns. There was a way that money could have been allocated for this whole initiative. It wasn't done. But we're now at February 2021. I sat in on the presentation made to Egremont. And I know both Egremont and Alford are going to put a warrant on, a warrant item for funding $15,000 towards this project. Actually, if we get the grant, we may not have to be asking towns for that amount. But for us, we already know that two of our five towns are saying, let's do what we need to do. I was surprised, actually, to hear that type of a response in terms of the towns being positive that way. I truly believe that it is incumbent upon us if there is a way to look at a budget transfer. And you never could say that something in no way impacts children. I know that. But if there is any way that we are able to do this, I think we are showing a good faith effort to this project. And buying good public relations for it. And the least of everything that I've said, and I know we would have never spent the money because Beth has said we don't have that kind of money to have gotten the, all the information we got from the NASDAQ funding work. But if we just looked at it on a transactional approach, $7,000 worth of information, which we may be able to use in our funding outreach, et cetera. It's good information. We're paying, we're giving $3,000. I think, given the response, which I did not expect from our communities, I think it's incumbent upon us to act in a way that professionally that we did. We're also caught in a bad position in that our neighboring district just said, we're giving you the 3,000 and then they went to the school committee. Two wrongs don't make a right. We lose too much by not, by not putting forth this 3,000.
Thank you, Bonnie. I see some hands up. I'm afraid I am not keeping track of whose hands up first. Is anybody doing that? Hannah?
Hannah's been waiting.
Okay, Hannah?
Thanks, everyone. I, I think Bonnie kind of addressed a lot of what Jenna's was asking too. And I just wanted to chime in and also help answer Jenna's question. Jenna, obviously, I'm newer to this regional planning board than everyone else. And I've definitely seen in my time there that there's a need for facilitation and a need for communication with the public. So I definitely want to be in support of that and I appreciate everyone's desire to be in support of what that committee is doing. At the same time, for me, no matter what the amount of money is, if it's coming out of a school budget during a pandemic, it's very, very challenging for me. If we're talking about shows of support, to me, it feels like we're taking money away from students at a time where that amount of money could actually do something significant. So that's where my discomfort is. And I think also it's hard to just feel like we're, we're in the position of having to do what the other school committee chose to do when we're clearly in support by showing up and doing work on this committee. So that's just how I feel personally.
Thank you very much, Hannah. So help me.
So just so you know, the hands are in awe of raised. So we began Jeff, Dennis.
Oh, there, okay, okay.
You have personal hands.
Okay, so, Danell, I'm going to do Danell, then Jeffrey, then Dennis Sears, okay? All right.
I don't know how to raise my hand.
Okay, I'll put your hand after Dennis. See ya. Okay.
They move the hand raising thing in reaction. So instead of participants, if you click on reactions in Zoom, you will see them, it says lower hand, a raised hand.
Reactions? I don't even see it.
If you scroll over the bottom of the bar.
I see it, I see it.
Click reactions, smiley face, and then you'll see a thing that says raised hand.
Oh, I see.
Okay. You did it. You're now a Zoom expert.
That's, that's not a raise hand, that's a thumbs up.
The reaction.
Excuse me, if you go to participants, there is a thing to raise your hand.
She got it, it's up.
Did it?
All right, she got it.
She's got it, she's got it.
Let's not get punchy here. We're here for two hours. But we have important business to do here. So let's give everyone who wants to speak a chance and then I would like to take the vote. So.
I'll try to go quick, yep, I'll try to go quick because I'm going to sound like a little bit of Bonnie and a little bit of Hannah. But I want to make sure it's said because I know Jenna's asked for all of our thoughts. I'm on the board, I was appointed in late November. I think I've been to a total of three meetings, so I'm not that far ahead of Hannah as far as newness. And I, Bonnie's sentiments where the whole board has done an incredible amount of work. It's all been on their own time, it's been amazing. And it's just undeniable about what, undeniably, just a large amount of work they've been doing on their own to try to get this all together. And I want to also echo that about Beth. She wrote a large part of that grant and if we get it, that would be amazing. And again, on top of everything else she's doing with everything else, there's this. So, but that being said, I don't think not voting for this is undermining the board, as Hannah said. It's money, it's not a grandiose amount, but it's still money. Whether it's $30 or $3,000, it's, it's still an amount of money that I would like to see being put towards an entity, especially during COVID. Maybe I would not be so short sighted had this not whole pandemic not happened. But it doesn't, I just don't see it benefiting our students, our staff, our district now. I know that potentially three, four years from now when this is all done, maybe depending on the outcome of what the recommendations of this consulting firm that we hire will recommend. Maybe it could benefit our students then. But I just now, I'm looking at now, at everything that's been stripped away from so many students because of COVID, I'd rather see money put towards that. PPE, testing in the schools, you know, increased COVID safety measures in the schools. So we can get our kids back to 40s a week, don't say anything that's not perfect. Just an example. Right now, I just, I think that that is too important to overlook. And I don't think that it's undermining any work that anyone's done. Like Hannah says, we show up and we try to help out as much as we can. But with this not being written into our budget from the beginning and kind of surprise, it, I, that's how I feel.
All right, so. Jeff?
Jeff? Thank you. First, Bonnie, I apologize when you were speaking, I started speaking up and I apologize for not watching you, so.
Apology accepted.
Thank you. Sometimes I need to even check myself. I think Jenna, to your question and to the board, like, I think the work that the school planning board is doing is very important work that needs to be done. These are, the NASDAQ reports shed some real light that, you know, when I moved here, I was in a microburst of population and that's not holding, it's not sustaining. So we really do need to study. And I think like the issue is, you know, how do we study it? The speed at which we study it, the thoroughness of which we study it is very important. The request that has been made, I think when it was originally made, it's like, we didn't know about the grant, we didn't know about all this stuff. Given that we know that there's a pending grant that's going to be awarded, the urgency is not nearly as important, that I would say. I share Danell's concerns and Hannah's concerns and I believe Bonnie's concerns as well. You know, we're in a pandemic with limited resources. This is probably not the best time to do it, but at the same time, being able to show a sign of support may not have to be financial at this time. If it does, though, and there's, the body does feel compelled to give some money to help with the bridge, even though in three weeks we could have money, the bank account flushed for that study board. I want a very clear message sent to the regional planning school district that the ask, I think, was a little tone deaf. It was not listening to the broader community's needs, meaning students, families who rely on the school for services, all the students and all the families that have got so much disruption this year. I don't think it's really well heard that's going on. And maybe there's a statement that goes through this that like, this cannot happen again. And if this is a town-driven initiative, because we were cut out of this process, we were kind of just forced into, there was actually by statute in the state, a preferred way that the school districts come together as opposed to creating this 24-person committee. That the funding needs to be taken care of at the town level is my feeling. And maybe there should be a strong statement that goes with it if we move forward at this.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Now, Jenna, your hand is up, I see it.
Is that me or is that him?
No, it's Jeff. It's not Dennis Sears, it's just Jenna.
Okay, this is, this is what I'm hearing and I'm not part of this. I'm hearing, first of all, the work that is being done and the importance of that work and the effect of that work. And that's, that's critical for me, that is a critical thing. Then I heard something not so explicit about the leadership. And then I heard about money. And then I asked myself, can we spare a dime, which is really making it, you know, very simplistic? But can we spare the money in view of the work? If the work is that important and should be done? So I'm hearing these three things that will affect my vote. And I thank you, all of you who spoke, for clarifying certain things.
Okay, Dennis?
Here.
Okay, I'm unmuted, I will lower my hand since I'm now speaking. But my, my position on this is reasonably straightforward. You know, we are in the business of educating the children for the five towns that make up the district, okay? That's what our business is for what it's worth. And basically, we have nothing in our budget that was put in our budget to ever look at, you know, doing this by joining the two districts together, okay? That's not in our budget this year. And, and I am dead set against us spending any of the money that we've gotten from the taxpayers, whether it's our local tax sources or whether it's from the state or anywhere else where we're getting it from, to fund this type of an effort. You know, if, if it is to be done, what was missed, to be quite frank, was that there was an opportunity early on in this whole process where the towns themselves could have also provided the funding. And that was not done. The point is, we can't go back and redo that again, okay? They can, as they're talking about in at least one or more of the towns, of putting something on their town warrant, which means that money is not going to be available until after town meetings is, are completed. So, you know, to make a long story short, I'm not in favor of us spending any of our money on this support. And I think that probably a reasonable approach would be for, you know, put the thing on hold and wait and see what kind of funding becomes available from the towns.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, Jeffrey, why don't you put your hand down just for clarity here?
No, I have a question, Jenna's.
But it's Bonnie's turn and I really want to shut this down as soon as possible so we can have a vote because it's after 8 o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you. This is a really hard one. And it's really difficult because on finance committee, I voted against this for the reasons that have been put forward. Anything that's coming out of our budget that does not impact, you know, children, I didn't think we should do it. And I didn't really change my mind on this until after sitting in on the Egremont meeting and also hearing what went on with Alfred and speaking to some of the leaders in the town of Sheffield. And I was surprised at the support and here and starting to hear things about our school. about our school committee being recalcitrant and hearing negative things in terms of what we were doing. So the question for me now becomes, well, if we didn't do theater productions this year or we didn't do some other things, is there a place to take money? And look, I never want to do this, but to take money that in a way is buying us good faith and is also saying, look, we know on the last grant, we got seven thousand dollars worth of information that we could be using. And then, so the question becomes for me of number one, a community outreach and public relations effort. And two, I don't think it's warranted in any way, the negative the negative view of our school committee as being recalcitrant. And you know, I'm the last one on earth who wants to be pressured to do something because another district is doing it. But I also value very much where we stand in our communities. And are we putting ourselves in a negative way, addressing exactly what Carrie Anne and Hannah said? No, if if the only way on earth is to take money out of direct services, obviously not. But if there are budget line items like, you know, we would be doing cabaret this week or our theater, is there a place to get it? And Beth, I don't want to put you in a bad position, but I am going to ask you on this because you've dealt with more closely than I think any of us because of the yours particular subcommittee. I'd really like to hear your view on this, if you're willing to give it.
Um, for me, I I think it's not about the amount of money. I'm going to say that, and I've said that all the the time. If it was fifty thousand dollars, I'd be saying something different. The three thousand dollars is not the issue. I think there are other significant issues that people have brought up here that I think, I don't, I don't want the headline in the paper to be Southern Berkshire won't give up three thousand dollars. That's not our issue. I don't think it's that. So so for me, it's not about the money, but I think all of the things that you are saying that that are meaningful, I want that to be the headline. That's all I would say about it. So can I find it? I think you can always find it. Is it taking it away from kids? It is because we didn't budget for anything different than that, but we, there will be some underutilized accounts. When I say underutilized, it doesn't mean I can't find another place to use it. But, um, yes, you can fund three thousand dollars. I want our message to be clear about how we're feeling about the process and, um, you know, and and what is good for this district and making sure that people understand all the implications of what we're doing and how it's being handled.
Then could we do something where the money is, should we pass it, is given, but with a very strong public letter to the full twenty-five people on that committee saying, this is what we stand for, you know, this is what we feel. And exactly what you just said, you know, in, because I don't want the, exactly what you said, the headline being, you know, we don't, we're not right. And to have a letter accompanying it signed by our school committee and our superintendent might be a way to go if we do approve it.
Okay, um, if everybody who wanted to speak has spoken, I think it is time to vote. And
Can we move? May I just bring up my point, Madam Chair, sorry?
Well, Jeffrey, if it's got, I'm going to give you one minute.
It'll be less than a minute. Bonnie came around to my point of like where I could see myself voting in favor of money, but there need to be an official letter coming from us with agreed language. So if the motion changes, I would vote differently than it is as it is currently stated.
I I would be willing to change my motion to say that the Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee is approving three thousand dollars for the um regional planning committees effort with a strong letter coming from our school committee. And if our superintendent wanted to join in it, uh, speaking to the fact that the issues that were raised tonight. So I don't know who seconded my original motion, but.
Arthur did. You want to second that one?
I second that.
Okay, so the motion that we're voting on is that we are voting to approve the request to we are approving, are releasing three thousand dollars to the regional school district planning board. Accompanied by a letter which expresses our concerns about our, our, let's see how we say that, our concerns about being asked to use budget money that was intended for kids for this purpose. Okay, so here we go. Bonnie, so.
Yes.
All right, I got a quick story here. Dennis Sears.
No.
Okay, um, where am I? Hannah?
No, and I just wanted to point out, I think we lost Janice.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't know what we do about that. Uh, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Uh, okay, Carrie Anne?
No.
Uh, okay, so I got Hannah, that's this is, all right, so now I'm going to, um, what? You taking that? Uh, Jonathan?
Yeah.
Arthur?
Yes.
Danell?
No.
Okay, so.
That's eight. You have been voted and Janice hasn't voted.
Right. Uh, yeah, well, that's.
Well, if it's a tie, then it doesn't pass.
I know that. Uh, I want to, so Dennis comes, I usually vote last, uh, so I want to see if we can find Dennis.
I'll call her. Think you get her back on.
Where's the music?
We need a little music.
I agree, Bonnie.
Is she eating? Going to go through the screen. Yeah, yeah, that's almond.
I should have catered.
No.
Just been a doozy today.
Beth, thank you for what you said. You really honed in on it.
I dug deep, Bonnie. I was digging it.
You mean after only a twelve hour day?
A little bit longer, I'm not going to lie. A little bit longer, we're on fifteen, but who's counting?
And I had all these questions I wanted to ask Sandy based on her report, and now I won't dare to do it.
I've got the sweet spot.
You're welcome. I gave you a lot of info, though. Yes.
We're a lot, uh, where's that so?
You left the following.
How how long was it supposed to be? Uh, well, I I think it's so important, I want everybody to have a voice if they can.
I think she really wanted her.
I think she's taking this really seriously, and I don't know whether she had a technical problem and she could call in or something. I have her phone number.
He's calling her. Now he's on.
I left two voicemails, um, they, and so, yeah.
Oh, God.
You can do it.
No, well, I I, as the chair, I think I have to vote yes. I feel very reluctant to do so, um, because I have the same concerns as everyone else. Uh, but, um, for the sake of, um, the issues that uh, I've been in this district since nineteen eighty-three and we've been bad mouth consistently. Uh, I don't want to be bad mouth over three thousand dollars. I want to be bad mouth over something bigger and more significant than we do. So I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, so that gives us five to four. Um, since I had authored this motion, would you like me to take a first stab at writing the nasty letter? Uh, no, not the nasty.
Nasty.
The um explanatory diatribe and then sending it to you, Jane?
Uh, yes, that would be great. And I I would assume that we want to approve it at a meeting rather than my sending it out as you send it to me, and we can't do that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So just that you could have it and edit unless anybody else wants to do it. Um, and then we could have it for the next meeting.
That's fine. Appreciate it. Okay, I really think your candor is fantastic. I I'm so impressed with our committee that we're, we feel free to say things, that we have a committee that everybody knows they have a voice. And, um, I, as a chair, am not manipulating you. I hope that by my voting yes, um, I haven't disappointed some of these people who I feel very, uh, I honor your commitment. And we're going to work forward, um, to make our dreams for these kids come true. I mean, that sounds a little corny, but that's what we're here for. Okay, um, now we're going, uh, we have stuff. Oh, Carrie Anne, yes? Did you want to say something?
Please clarify who this letter is going to that we passed a motion for?
The my motion said to the full uh regional planning committee.
Thank you.
And it's also will be read at our next meeting and be public knowledge. So, uh, anybody who's listening or is on public access TV with our Zooms or something, it will be shared with the person in that manner.
Can you put in the package?
It'll be in the package, yes. Um, the next thing is subcommittee research.
Thank you.
Um, I hope that we don't have too many reports. Does anybody have a report that needs to come forward tonight? Finance, do you need to say anything?
Um, this was a, the the planned report was, um, for today was Beth's presentation because she knew the cherry sheets were going to come out. So, um, we, instead of having a finance committee meeting, this was the next step. So we will be needing, once again.
The buildings and grounds? Nothing, uh, community relations and public school baskets, if you want to do say a word.
Yep, we met tonight right before the the meeting. We had a great discussion trying to reorganize and establish our 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 purpose, which we want to run by the school committee as well. And, um, great discussion, we'll go from there, hopefully meet in the next week or two.
Our policy?
Uh, only thing on policy is, since Art is sitting there, Art, you need, you owe me a response on whether or not you can meet the either one of the two dates that I had sent in an email to you on.
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. Can you, can you, Thursday is okay for you?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, neither of the other two committees have met.
Well, negotiations did, but you heard our report today.
Yeah, actually, it isn't on this list, that's why.
It's personnel negotiation.
Oh, sorry, I didn't read it properly. Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm going to skip the chairman's report in the interest of time, Superintendent.
So the only thing I want to address tonight, there were a few things, but I'm just going to shorten it to one because we, Ms. Byrne has been waiting nicely the entire meeting to talk a little bit about, um, what are we doing when we think about um, whether or not to bring students back in and just with, um, the COVID guidance in general. So the commissioner met with, um, superintendents last week, and we are to meet, I believe, early next week. And he said that they are feverishly working on updating the guidance. And they are also, while they're doing that, they're waiting with the CDC is about to release some updated guidance too. They are anticipating that the regulations will be relaxed, but advised us all to hold off from making any moves or plans until we get that guidance. So that's supposed to be within the next couple of weeks. With that said, I, there was a survey that went out prior to the holidays. And in that survey, it was interesting because people, the the responses, there were about three hundred responses. So depending on how you looked at the questions, um, people would say, well, I'd be interested in looking at this or I'd be interested in looking at that. But when you looked at the actual write-in area, there were only about, believe it or not, out of all of those twelve or thirteen people who said, let's bring them right back in right now. Because there was a lot of what ifs, and what it said is, can we wait a little bit? Can we see what the, what it's going to look like when we get back from vacation? I want to be perfectly clear, I hope I never give the impression that I don't. As soon as I can get children back into the building, five days a week, I think it's absolutely the right thing to do. I'm not, I I'm not the only say in that, though. We have, we have things we have to negotiate, we have, uh, regulations we have to meet, and we have to have comfort of our whole community when we make those decisions. So, um, I think it's super important. I know it's the right thing. We all want it, and as soon as we can make it happen. So I'm I'm hopeful that this guidance will come out and give us some more wiggle room. Um, we need that so that we can relax the regulations and get kids back in the classroom. That's, that's all we're hoping for. So that's, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you for sharing that with us, and we're looking forward to what the commissioner comes up with next because we have to follow those guidelines. Uh, and Sandy, welcome.
Jane, you have people with hands raised.
Sorry, I'm in a hurry. Okay, so questions for Beth?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Beth, are we among the school districts that have put in to become testing sites?
In the pool testing?
Yeah, but pool testing for the whole Commonwealth?
We are not. We, we did put in for, which Sandy will probably talk about in her report, the binax testing, which is for the, but we did not do pool testing. And, um, we did have discussions with our local surrounding districts and, um, those of us who are on the smaller side, um, did not necessarily think that pooling was going to resonate in a way that made sense for our district. Um, so sometimes we're too small. We have things that are working, our job as we know is to try to keep kids in as much as possible. And I think pool testing is something that's a little. And I think pool testing is something that's a little bit, um, and we're not, we're not sure how comfortable we are with how that's going to work out. So for right now, we're, and, and the cost and the time to administer that, I think, was one of the issues. I, I, I would let Sandy talk a little bit more, things she's been working.
Thank you.
On that, but, um, the binax testing, we are moving forward, um, with. And that's again, it sounds like it's going to be super helpful, but probably not really, because we still have to do the same thing. The regulations still require us to put people out and fill and follow the guidelines. So I'll let her when she gets there.
Okay, uh, so Arthur?
Um, has there been any talk about us becoming a vaccination site?
Uh, we have received no, uh, the only vaccination that site information, well, no site information. All that we know is we're in round two or three now, two, which is February to April. That's literally all we know.
And Dennis here?
I gotta quickly get unmuted here again, but, uh, just a question to Beth. Uh, I had a discussion with the, uh, deputy commissioner of, uh, Department of Higher Education the other day. And, uh, who have this joint relationship with DESE when it comes to this, this mix of this kind of question about in-cast tests tied to Adam's scholarships and, and all that, which has been a concern, you know, to me and to other people in our community. And, uh, they, uh, the, the deputy commissioner implied that, that there, that they were in joint efforts and we should expect to hear something soon regarding that issue. Have you heard anything else through, through your sources?
I have, actually. Uh, so the commissioner did mention that, um, there was concern, uh, and I'm sure some of our concerns were in that file about, but he said that there has always been an alternative way to apply. It's not new. There's always been an alternative way to apply. So even though it may not be the traditional route, I think one of the things they were talking about was, um, I, I think it's 11th grade students can take the SATs this spring and submit that, and that would qualify them. There are alternatives that make people still eligible, and that's all part of the application process. So nothing changed. It's moving forward. It's still going to be a program that is going to be, um, honored and moving forward. So no one's losing out on it because it's, it's not the traditional way that they would normally be, um, obtaining it. If that makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Danielle?
So really quick, and if you can, so this now, okay, I was reading last night an article put out by the CDC recommending, you know, students get back into the schools and they're doing it safe. Does that, by their CDC recommendations, does that not trickle down as easily as she says to the state commissioners and?
It'll come, it'll literally come out with guidance from both. It'll go from the CDC and the commissioner, and that's the guidance we'll follow.
Any other hands that I'm missing? I don't think so.
They have to relax some regulations that they haven't relaxed yet, so I can't do anything.
Yeah, so they're distancing a lot.
Right, right, yeah. But in the testing that, oh, I guess we'll let somebody talk about it.
Okay, well, let's, 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 Sandy, give us a round.
I'm sure I will. So let me talk about pool testing for that first. Okay, so that came out. We did fill out the initial application. We, we did do the survey, the initial survey.
It's a little hard to hear Sandy.
Oh, well, hustle up, yeah.
Do you know the owl really looks like an owl? Oh, yeah, it was a different effect.
It really does look like an owl, okay. So, um, the pool testing, like I was saying, we did throw out the initial survey, participated in a few webinars, but it's just, you have a pool, right? So you select, um, various groups of kids and staff throughout the building, and they're in a pool. And, you know, there's definitions about how many students or, or staff are in that pool. But then you test, you know, certain members of that pool. And then if there's a positive test, then all of the people in that pool go out. So things that we were concerned about are the smallness of our district. Um, and I think that's what every of the, all the small districts are thinking right now, that it is, it'd be very hard. It would be easy to identify people. The confidentiality would be a problem. Um, you know, the chance for a false positive and then it impacting, you know, such a number of people. We, we're kind of trying to weigh out the pros and cons, and even this was said in various webinars, that there, you know, those are the cons to it. So I think ultimately we determined that maybe that, based on our experience so far this year, that that is something we felt like we needed to delve into, that it might actually be more disruptive potentially to the educational process. And we've done quite well here. And I'm going to knock wood and hope that that continues to happen because the community has been very conscientious. So that's pool testing. Binax now testing, which is the antigen card testing we apply for, and we are participating in for staff members. So what that is, is we now have the test. We have our CSR, our laboratory certificate. We have everything in place. The nurses are sending out a letter to the staff tomorrow. And what that is, is if a staff member shows, um, symptoms related to COVID while at work. Now, they shouldn't come to work if they have symptoms, but if they manifest symptoms while at work, this is a test that we can, essentially can be given by the nurses to determine if, um, there is a potential positive. It, essentially that lay fears is really what it's about. Because either way, negative or positive, the staff person has to have a follow-up PCR test. So it's really kind of to give people, you know, maybe a little sense of, you know, security. Um, and it gives, it's a layer that, um, will help prevent potential other issues popping up. So that is just starting. We, we have the test. The, um, nurses have done all the trainings, and, um, they're sending a letter out to staff now. And then the staff members have to register on a website in order to participate because all of it goes to math, all the information goes to math DPH.
And is the testing just for, um, staff and faculty, not for?
Not for students. We opted not to do that right now.
Do you hear it's just for staff and faculty, not for children?
Staff only.
Okay.
So that's that. Oh, okay. So I have this really great report, and essentially I'm, and if you have questions, I heard Bonnie say she had questions. So I'll go over this just really quickly. What I'm showing you here is over the course of five years, um, the number of referrals received. And by referral, I mean a special education referral for evaluation where various professionals have evaluated a child and write up a report. And we determine whether or not, through a, a team process, whether or not the, the student qualifies for special education services. What's important for you to see here is the process of, um, response to intervention and how we're utilizing that in an effort to decrease the need for referrals, especially, you know, those that are, um, referrals that are made by school districts, by staff members, and, um, not test students, um, over test students that might not, um, really need to go through that process while interventions be put into place. So what you can see here is there's the referrals. You can see the number of referrals. You see them decrease. Then you can see there's like a, an increase in the middle here of the number of students that ended up being qualified. So that just shows that we're, the process is working, okay? And then I showed you on the ele, on the second page, the elementary level, the number of students who, um, were receiving interventions through this RTI or Student Support Team process, who ultimately went to referral and qualified. In 2017, 18, which was the first year we started gathering that data, you can see 66%. And then it went down dramatically to 0%. And then, you know, here we're at the 19 to 25%, but at this stage of the game in the 2021 school year, we're only talking about four students. So the, the point about this is that our process is working, that we're utilizing our human resources and, um, other resources to help kids before we get to the identification process, which really is how things run most effectively. And that's really what response to intervention is all about. And it also is cost-effective, and it's also better for kids. So I wanted you to just see that because I think that that process, um, the, the response to intervention process, we have teams at the elementary and the secondary levels have been very effective. And I, I wanted to show that information to you because it has an impact across the board. Questions about that, Bonnie?
Um, actually, ye- yes, I mean, you made it a lot more clear, but the, how does this impact how you're planning and asking for funding and what you're planning in the upcoming year? And also how, how, has it impacted at all how you are, um, planning in terms of the months ahead, at least of COVID?
Um, I think.
And I love, I thought the report was really interesting. Thank you.
Good, good, thank you. Um, I have to thank a few people to, for getting this data to me. But, um, I, I think the important piece of all of this is that how we utilize our resources. And we don't want to over-identify students with disabilities who might not have a disability. And we're talking, you know, some of these are a very young age, right? We're talking first, second, third grade. That's a big deal to go through an assessment process. And it's challenging for families to find out that there's a, you know, the child might have a learning difference. So reallocation of resources to interventionists, you know, and we're, we're starting to realize that that is a better way to utilize in general our funds, is to provide interventions for students. And this is what the result is. It's not leading to just the testing process and then a student being identified, um, you know, as needing special education services and then being in a plan for a while.
But does it change at all how you're asking for funding or changing your staffing?
It, it, we're talking about increasing potentially interventionist, people who are providing the actual interventions to students. I mean, we only have one school psychologist that, that we're never going to be able to change that. He's, he's already stretched. But, um, it, it does help us with the utilization of our teachers, yes. How we're utilizing them. They're not testing, they're providing interventions. It's not testing as much. I'm not having to ask for as many new assessments, you know, there's things like that. So I feel like that's.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeff, did you have a question? And welcome back, Dennis. I'm sorry you missed the vote.
I am sorry too, but I lost Wi-Fi connection.
Yeah, okay, welcome back.
I planned it deliberately so I didn't have to deal with.
Yeah, I wish I could have planned. I, I would have gone with you if I could have. Jeff and, uh, I'm barely awake here, but I'm, I'm listening.
Um, thank you. Um, Sandy, this was really interesting information. Thank you to you and your team. Have we heard, like, from families, that the families approaching and coming with concerns and whatnot? Has this, have we had qualitative kind of feedback loops? You know, compared to a couple of years ago where it was, you know, a lot of screaming and whatnot for whatever. Like, are, are families feeling like they're, this is a good proactive solution?
I, I believe so, and especially because some of how we've allocated our resources, and it's, and this has been especially beneficial this year, is supporting families at home, right? Because kids and people are having harder, this is a hard time. And so some behaviors are being manifested at home. We've all heard about it. Your children are home and they're not in school as much. So we've been able to utilize funding in order to provide interventions in the home. And the problem starts to resolve itself where that would have led to a referral. So yes, we're getting some very positive feedback. Matter of fact, I got some today. So, um, real, like, thank you. This helped us at home. Because sometimes I think families are struggling to, to tease out what's going on. They look to the school district, which of course we're here, and sometimes home and school, you're talking about.
Froze again? Froze.
Not frozen, not frozen. Not frozen. We see you. You can't hear us? Is that the problem?
Hello?
We hear you.
All right, well.
Thank you very much, Sandy.
Can I just say something about our tiered focus monitoring because we had our exit interview today? Um, we had to go mid-cycle review. Um, we had to do a self-assessment. We go through all of the processes to look at special education and civil rights. And today we had our exit interview, and we'll get a report soon, but it was very positive. We had positive feedback, and it's going to drive some of our, um, planning going forward. And it directly relates to some of the, of things in our strategic plan, including some of our anti-bias training that we're doing. So I wanted to share that with you. Not just that, she's being very modest. The, um, the auditor from the state was, um, just thoroughly engaged. She wanted to talk to us to see, um, how we were doing the things that we were doing because there, there was no findings, no findings after this extensive amount of work. And not only that, she wanted to find out, um, you know, what are the good things we're doing so that they can share with other people. So I think we should acknowledge the incredible work that Sandy and her team is doing. And, um, it's really important. It was a ton of work, a ton of work, um, on top of everything else. So, um, it was, it was a very nice meeting, and she was, um, very supportive and helpful for the difference. So we'd be remiss to not do that.
That's a great move, a great move. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
We are very lucky.
And that's why we make her wait all the way to the end.
Come on, hurry to get to know us. Well, let's go to dinner.
Yeah, please, someone.
Uh, all right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Bonnie, and the second was from Art.
Art.
Art, okay, roll to all votes. Dennis, you can go first.
Me? I'm, I'm voting until I, I'm told what the results of the other vote was.
Oh, okay. Uh, there was five yes and four no. So if you had voted no, it would have been a tie, and we would have.
Okay, I vote for adjourn.
Okay. All right.
The motion did change, though. There's going to be a letter that goes along with it.
Yes, yes, we are going to let them know what we think.
Okay.
Dennis here?
Yes.
Uh, Hannah?
Yes.
Uh, Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Carrie Anne?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes, please.
Art?
Yes.
Danielle, I want to strictly thank Art, who wasn't feeling that well today, that he was able to stay. And that Jonathan has a bad back. I'm sure we have, everybody has something to complain about. They particularly are not comfortable. Uh, and everybody's hungry, Danielle.
Maybe you could feel better if you put some pants on. I'm just looking at you.
Are you ready, John?
Yes.
I am too. Thank you very much. Could you see it?